Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Pitt County Board of Commissioner Annual Budget Public Hearing, to those of you in the audience, and also to those by way of television. Welcome. At this time, I'd like to call a meeting to order. All present, please raise your right hand. And we shall have the invocation by Commissioner Garrison, pledged by Commissioner Ford.
Let's all stand, please. Father, we thank you this evening for your many blessings upon us. We thank you for the opportunity to have serving this great county. We thank you for the way you have blessed our county, for the way you have blessed us with great people who are committed to doing that which is right. We just thank you for each citizen of Pitt County, and pray, Father, that you might bless us as a board this evening. Father, we'll be making possibly a decision this evening about our approved budget for next year. We pray that you would guide and direct us and help us to make that decision that is most beneficial to the citizens we represent. These blessings, we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Please face our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Move and properly second. To approve the agenda, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed? I have carried. At this time, we have the presentation by our manager Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's meeting, public hearing, is to receive public comments regarding the operating budget, proposed operating budget for next year's budget for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. That budget would begin on July 1 and end on June 30, 2018. There's three documents before you. On the screen will be the PowerPoint that will be presented. Beyond the PowerPoint that you have, a paper copy of. You also have a copy of the manager's budget message, and then you have a copy of the proposed budget ordinance that sets into place the budget if you so choose to adopt tonight, after receiving public input. In terms of the PowerPoint presentation, again, we're here for the next year's proposed operating budget, and got a few slides to run through, just to recap what we've talked about over the past month, month and a half. In terms of your priorities, these are just the key priorities: education, public safety, economic development, human services, facility and space needs, infrastructure improvements, and recreational activities. In the state of the past, we have tried taking the requests and placing them against this list of priorities in their priority to make sure that, to try it as a goal, to have the requests come before you in that format. In terms of the guiding principles for this budget, it addresses the stated priorities of you as a board in terms of education, public safety, health and welfare, by adding positions and additional funding as we are able. Continues the concept of base budgeting, which is basically where we start with the base and we try not to expand the budget or the base without a corresponding revenue source to match that. Includes a one cent tax rate adjustment to maintain the levels of service with some limited expansion that will be expounded upon. It has consideration of the concept of structural balance, has consideration of reliance on fund balance appropriation, and has a conservative revenue projections at or below appropriations. In terms of the budget highlights, again, adjusts the tax rate to sixty-nine point six from sixty-eight point six, increases funding both to Pitt County Schools, Pitt Community College, increases staffing and service levels to the public safety and human service functions of county government. It does include employee market adjustment and pay for performance or merit compensation for the workforce. It includes a $1.1 million vehicle replacement plan for the sheriff's office, above and beyond what we normally do with our vehicle replacement plan, as this was discussed during the budget workshops. It also reduces the fund balance appropriation from the current year from four million to three million in terms of supporting ongoing operations. The next screen pretty much gives you the budget picture for all the funds that comprise the county budget, a total of rounded 246 million compared to our current budget, 237 million. This represents a 3.74 percent increase year over year. On the next slide, in terms of the general fund, which is a component of the overall budget, which we've stated in the past, the general fund is that fund that really drives the tax rate for the budget. You can see that the original departmental requests were little over 180 million dollars. We took close to 6 million dollars in reductions, came in at the revised recommended budget of rounded 175 million. Then you have the tax rate sixty-eight point nine. The adopted budget for this year is 168 compared to 175. That represents a 3.8 percent increase within the general fund itself. On the next slide, in terms of board-directed revisions to the budget, these are via your input, your directives, in terms of taking the manager's recommended budget, it's been built upon the premise of an increase. The one cent tax increase, again, raising it one cent, as already stated, reduces the fund balance appropriation from four million to three million. It adds the additional positions that have been discussed through the workshops, and increases the library appropriation to one of the libraries from 5,000 to 10,000. On the next screen, for revenue review and highlights, you have a pie chart as we've presented. You can see the largest source of revenue does come from ad valorem taxes paid by Pitt County citizens or residents who reside in Pitt County, and you can see the breakout otherwise. On the next slide, in terms of revenues, in terms of how all this money breaks out, for the total of the 246 million dollar overall operating budget, ad valorem taxes comprise over 95 million, other taxes 22, intergovernmental 39, permits and fees rounded at four million, sales and service 18, interest earnings is 232,000, miscellaneous 10 million, fund balance is appropriated 11, and then again, down to the bottom, the 246 million. On the next slide, the ad valorem tax rate, again, proposed to be sixty-nine point six cents, a penny greater than the sixty-eight point six today. Distribution between the general fund and the development commission fund would be a sixty, sixty-eight point nine and a point seven going to the development commission for industrial development purposes. The property tax base, which is what we leverage the tax rate against in order to raise the ad valorem taxes, in the current year, we had a rounded 12.3 billion dollar tax base. This year, rounded, it is projected to be 12.7 billion, which is a 330 million dollar increase, representing 2.68 percent, which is, we had been averaging about 1.5, so we're seeing the tax base beginning to grow, as was already stated during the budget workshops. In terms of proposed fee changes, we have some fee changes as we previously presented within animal services and environmental health. On the expenditure review and highlights, again, we have a pie chart in terms of the overall expenditures, and you can see how all that breaks out in this, in the green portion in the bottom left corner of the circle, your highest appropriation continues to go to education at 24.33 percent. The expenditure screen next gives you that breakout, and if you look about halfway down that chart, you will see education there, and that's 60 million rounded, or 59,845,273. That is the total amount that is appropriated to education, whether Pitt County Schools, Pitt Community College, debt service, all the different appropriations we make for education, which is your number one priority, as stated in your adopted priority list. And then you can see how the, all the other expenditures break out to bounce back to the 246 million dollar overall operating budget. In terms of education funding, we will look at Pitt County Schools first. On the screen in the right-hand column is what is recommended for the new year, recommending a two percent increase for Pitt County Schools, the 757,467,000 dollar increase. On the next slide, you can see for Pitt Community College, again, right-hand column for seventeen eighteen, again, recommending a two percent increase of 113,913. So for Pitt Community College, you're looking at a 5,909,539 appropriation, and back on Pitt County Schools, you're looking at a 39,970,807 appropriation being recommended. On the next slide, I've already alluded to this in the earlier slide, but total education funding for all sources, again, comes up to this 59,845,723, close to 60 million dollars, 60 million dollars of the county's overall operating budget going to the number one priority. Next slide, giving highlights of EMS and FIRE within the EMS fund. We, the EMS Oversight Committee, has recommended the continuation of the 4.6 cent EMS tax, which applies to all of Pitt County with the exception of the city of Greenville, and this continues the capital replacement plan. The next slide gives the breakout in terms of the EMS budget, in terms of the revenues, of a 5,574,849 dollar overall operating budget that is balanced and is generated by the taxes, as well as transport fees, interest earnings, fund balance, and such. And then you can see expenditures is broken out between the county operations and the 10 squads, eight being nonprofit and 10 being county ran, again, for that 5.6 million dollar overall operating budget. Within the FIRE fund itself, the county funds via individual tax, ad valorem tax rates, they're set within each of the 20 individual fire departments. There is only one department requesting a change, that's indicated on the screen, that would be the Aiden Fire Department, going from 5.99 to 7.24 cents. We also have six different fire departments who are requesting a vehicle purchase, and this would be in line with your new vehicle purchase policy that was adopted late last summer, early last fall, and this is for fire apparatus supplemental funding. And highlights of the policy are that you would do, you would fund five departments each year. Again, keep in mind, you have six departments asking for an apparatus this year. A department would be eligible once every five years. You would appropriate 25,000 dollars to the eligible departments, and it must be a pumper or tanker. And as I mentioned during the budget workshops, we, the policy states that if more than five departments apply for the funding, we will work with the fire association president to help prioritize those. But like I've said in the past, in the past years, you may have six departments say they're going to purchase a vehicle, but when it gets down to it, normally, half of those or two-thirds of those actually are able to get everything, all their ducks in a row to get it done, so that they push it out a year. So that's really never been an issue in the past. In terms of the county's overall CIP or Capital Improvement Plan, the 10-year plan total of all of the, if you take all the, total of all the request expenditures is 97,60785. The amount that is in there for July 1 for fiscal year seventeen eighteen is 4,709,260. There are 11 projects recommended, and if you'll recall, we've changed the format or the operating philosophy of how we recommend doing the CIP, and we're only putting in the CIP in year one, and even in those recommended projects for future years, when it has an identified funding source, whether it's general fund, taxes, grants, whatever it may be, it has to have a definite identified funding source. You see a note there saying of the 4.7 million, 3 million will be funded out of current funding, pay-as-you-go, and 1.7 will be financed through a three-year bank loan. And that 1.7 is the 1.1 million for the sheriff's 30 vehicles, and then the 600,000 for the normal vehicles that we do under the normal vehicle replacement plan. So you saw the next slide is the list of recommended projects that comprise the 4.7 million dollar CIP appropriation for the new year. That is broken out between general government, public safety, education, and environmental protection, and this reflects what was presented as part of the budget workshops. And before we move to the last slide, and it's actually, you can go ahead and click on the last slide, but did want to note, we received correspondence, again, from the Woodmore Farms subdivision regarding their assessment petition, and they're telling us that they are ready to bring their petition in. They have greater than the 75 percent signatures for it. We'll need to verify that in-house to make sure that all the signatures are correct. But you will be presented with consideration in the near future for a close to a 400,000 dollar road paving project. It is, your policy is for an assessment program where those households would have the opportunity to pay that back over a 10-year period. But my whole point in bringing this up is that in order to do that, we'll, you'll need to make sure you have adequate fund balance reserves, because basically, you're loaning this money out to the residents. It lowers your, will further lower your fund balance in terms of the percentage, and just want you to know that that is looming. And before we, we were saying, we think it's coming, that we know we're working on it, they're telling us they've exceeded the 75 percent and it's being submitted. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. At this time, I now declare the public hearing open for comments. Anyone sign up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have several people signed up. Rodney Coles, if he'll come forward and restate his name and address.
Mr. Chairman, I'll keep your time at five minutes per speaker. Pitt County welcomes all comments on the budget this evening.
If you want to state your name and your address, please.
Yes, Rodney Coles, 411 Beasley Drive. I'm with Church's Outreach Network, and I first wanted to say thank you for allowing me to be here to speak, and as this budget go, I hope the budget go through with the budget. There's such a need in our community. What do I do? I find what is the need and continue helping in our community. I've been here now, be 13 years in Greenville. Pitt County have growing. Just last year, I'm a part of the Toys for Tots, I'm the coordinator for Pitt County as well. We actually did 19,361 children. We did additional of 4,000 of last year. I don't know what this year is going to come up to, but I just wanted to say that I hope that the budget pass. Things that we need in our community, this city is growing, and today was the first day I drove down Dickerson Drive. I didn't realize it was open, it'd been closed so long. So enjoy driving down here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Melissa Adamson.
My name's Melissa Adamson, and I live at 1802 E. 6th Street in Greenville. I'd like to also say thank you so much for everything that you do. I know that you take a lot of time and energy to arrive at the best possible decision for Pitt County residents, and I just really appreciate that. Again, my name is Melissa, and like many people in our community, I wear a lot of hats. I'm a parent, I have two kids. At opposite ends of the spectrum, I have a 16-year-old who is a junior at Rose High School, and I have a two-year-old who, in three very short years, will be entering Pitt County Schools in kindergarten. I also work for United Way, and we have a very strong focus on education. I'm a property owner, I'm a Pitt County resident for a really, really long time, and I am the vice chair of Parents for Public Schools of Pitt County. And so we were really interested in creating the most opportunity that we possibly can for education, and we usually have a posse of parents here, but because of the week that it is, the last week of schools, they're very involved in a variety of different graduation activities, all the way from pre-K to high school graduation. So on behalf of Parents for Public Schools, I just want to say thank you from them as well. Also, I follow Commissioner Webb on Facebook, and have been following the property tax increase debate pretty closely. I appreciate the way that you use Facebook as a way to communicate with constituents, and I think many other people do as well, so thank you for that. I'm here today wearing all of those hats to express my support of the property tax increase, along with many others that I think have expressed their support as well through that feed and following that online. And I recognize that there is a philosophical debate with the unfunded mandates, both federal and state, and, you know, I appreciate the fiscal pressures that it puts on our local government, and it is really unfair. However, the consequence to our students is also very unfair if we don't make sure that we're doing everything that we can, which I know that you are, to support public education in our community. And as a result of that, we have the potential to lose at least 54 positions, assistant principal positions, teacher positions, and as a parent, and also with all of those other hats that I have, I really just want the most premier education opportunities available, the most premier education system available, not only for my kids, but for every child in Pitt County. And so whether or not you have kids, I really do believe that everyone in this room, as well as everyone in our county, really has a stake in this, as well as skin in the game. And in the long run, it doesn't make sense to sacrifice the quality of our children's education. It doesn't help the community, it doesn't help third grade reading scores, it doesn't help graduation rates, it's not going to help our graduates graduate with the skills they need to compete in a 21st century world. And so it's just really important that we continue to make education a priority, like I know that you already do. And I know that the gang unit is also a hot topic for tonight, and if we ever want to see a decrease in gang activity in our community, equality education for every child is key. And it's really concerning that education is even in the crosshairs. And in my opinion, I think that we have the power, and at least an obligation, to do the best that we possibly can to stabilize quality education in our community. And tonight, bypassing that property tax increase, I think that we can do that. So I'm in favor, and nothing is more important than our kids' education. And again, I thank all of you, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Next, we have Marsha Wiley.
My name is Marsha Wiley. I live at 111 Martinsboro Road in Greenville, North Carolina. I thank you for the presentation that you just gave, it helped me catch up. I normally, as, I'm obviously a stranger here, but I welcome the opportunity to come before you, and I thank you for the hard work of putting together the budget. I understand how difficult these things are, and I also understand how long it takes to do this process. I appreciate that you are on the bad end, if I might say, of what the state has done by defaulting and leaving you short on money and funds, and assuming that you are going to take up the slack of what they're not going to give to you, is what they're promising you as far as education funds and other funds. And that is truly not fair. And I hope that you respond after this budget process by complaining as loudly as possible to the state of North Carolina. They need to hear from each and every county on the shortfall of funds that were promised to you. However, I've been a resident in Pitt County now for over nine years, and when we first bought our house, within a few months, the property was devalued. That was a shock. And I know that there are many houses in Pitt County, in fact, a larger proportion that are rent to own, are rental houses. This is not good for when one wishes to go sell a house. And part of that is caused by the kind of transient people that we have in Pitt County. As a result, raising taxes on us doesn't help one bit, and I don't really support raising taxes. I realize that you have a lot on your mind and a lot of issues that the county needs, but if you can avoid raising taxes in any way, I would appreciate your support in that manner. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, that's all we have signed up. Unless there's anybody else in the audience who'd like to come forward.
Anyone in the audience, I'd like to come forward and speak. State your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Allison Setzer. I live at 1210 Porter Place in Eastern Pines in Greenville. I am a principal at H.B. Sugg and Sam D. Bundy in Farmville. I'm also the president of the Principal and Assistant Principal Association, and I come here tonight proudly, representing all of my colleagues, in support of a tax increase. It absolutely does my heart good to see that education is the topic of your priority list, as it is every day, as we battle and fight for our community, and I believe that that's the foundation in which we build. You know, it's said that there's no other investment that gives you as great of rewards and yields as the education system. Even with that, we are still dealing with teacher shortages, assistant principal cuts, no textbooks. Your efforts to help supplement what the state has taken from us is very much appreciated. No one wants to hear tax increase, but then again, no one wants failing schools. This is the future of our community. This is where we will have a job force and citizens coming to us prepared. So it's with my full heart that I thank you for supporting education and ask that you pass the increase. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. I now declare the public hearing closed. At this time, Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Chairman, before we get into that, I'd like to thank each one that came tonight to speak. It is, and shows an interest in what you project for us, and it means a lot that you took your time and your energy and your resources and the presentation that each of you made. Thank you for coming and sharing with us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With that said, Commissioner Garrison.
I too would like to thank each of you for coming this evening. I really appreciate your input. I value your input of all four of you, so thank you very much for taking your time and coming and sharing with us. We have spent the last couple of weeks really debating this budget, and I know our staff has spent the last several months trying to build a reasonable budget. I am at the top of the list of those that do not want a property tax increase. However, there comes a time when we have to make the difficult decisions, recognizing that it's not going to make everybody happy, that we have to move forward. Now, I've looked at this budget, as well as all my fellow commissioners, I know every one of you have examined this budget in detail, and even with this budget that was presented this evening, there is 6.2 million dollars in requested revenue that we are not granting. If we were to do that, we would really have to increase the tax rate another five cents, and we're not going to do that. So I really feel like that this budget, as it is presented, is a reasonable budget, even though it does include the penny tax increase. And I am reluctantly going to make a motion that we approve this budget as was presented this evening.
I second that motion.
It has been motion and properly second that we approve the budget as presented. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the said motion?
Just a point of discussion.
Commissioner Webb.
And you've probably heard this from me before, but I'm going to say it again. The biggest number in this budget to me is 10.7 million dollars of unfunded state mandates. And these don't come in the form of an invoice from the state telling us that we will provide what equals 226 employees for the educational system, but imagine the habit if we let these people go. 266 employees being pulled out of the system would be a very serious consequence, a consequence bigger than the 10 million dollars. And I'm not even placing the blame, because this has been going on for a long time, on our local reps, because they don't drive the ship, the leadership does, but all 100 counties have got to start banding together about this and get the state to pick up its responsibility in this thing. I've been agonizing over the budget because I'm at a point where my philosophy has collided with my practicality. And if county, if government is a car, county- And if county government, if government is a car, county government's not the engine. And we're the lug nuts that just keep the wheels on the car so it can keep running. Because everything that is mandated by Raleigh or Washington is not made to work by Raleigh or Washington. It's made to work here, and it's made to work over in Rocky Mount, and it's made to work over in Little Washington by county commissioners, just like us, who have to make the ends meet. And when you look at the things that we're funding in this, this is, if this passes, you're talking about, if you own a two hundred thousand dollar house, a dollar and sixty-six cent a month. And that buys you the continued standard of education that we are currently providing. And the increases to education that we're talking about aren't even that much instructional as it is just paying insurance and social security increases and just fixed costs that cost to go. We have almost a million dollars in HVAC needs at the schools. We've got doors that need locks that were made this century at the community college. And these are just bargain basement, average, everyday cost of doing business expenses. And this is annoying because with, if the state picked up its responsibility, we could have funded the six point one million dollars, Mr. Garris, that we talked about, that everyone requested, which was a wish list of all things. And if you go through the list, and I'd be happy to submit the list publicly, there needed things like cameras in the courthouse. And we could have done all that, cut taxes by two cents, and still had two million dollars to put in the fund balance, all because we're picking up a responsibility that is the state's. But when the state fails in its responsibility, I think this board has a responsibility to make sure that the needs are met for the citizens of this county. And so, as I said earlier, I've hit this point where my practicality and my philosophy have collided. But at the end of the day, my philosophy matters less than whether or not I'm doing the job I was elected to do and make tough decisions to make the car run, to keep the wheels on the car for the citizens of this county. And I will support Mr. Garris's motion this time and support this as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Call for questions.
Question?
Call for questions.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of the said motion, let it be known by raising your right hand. I'm sorry. All opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, before we dismiss, because I think that's the last thing on the agenda, I think that we need to go back and just take a few minutes. I don't want to extend this meeting, but we need to go back and talk about these unfunded mandates. And I would like to go on and start the discussion and make a motion that we issue a proclamation, and this proclamation go to all our House and Senate members at the state level and the federal level. And I know that's a pretty big task, but I think we need to do that and express our concern about these unfunded mandates. And what we are simply requesting is that the federal government and the state government do what they are supposed to do so we can do what we are supposed to do and emphasize in that proclamation that this is costing our local citizens increased property taxes. And we had to increase our property taxes this year because of this. So I'd like for us to proceed with that action, and that is my motion.
Mr.?
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Has been moved properly seconded. Now, discussion?
Yes, discussion. I agree with you, gentlemen, because, but I'd like to go further than just the state legislators. I'd like to see very much you to lead it to other counties and let them join in this, I won't call it a battle, but join in this idea to let them know our displeasure as to how we are handled at the state level and the federal level. So.
I agree with that.
I like this.
Can we add that to the motion? Because I think we all.
Yes, okay.
And importantly, there's so many new faces at the General Assembly. They may not even know.
They may not even know.
And so it's not an adversarial thing, as we're just trying to educate our partners of what's happening to us here.
And they've not been county commissioners either.
Some of them have.
A lot of them.
Surprisingly, a lot of them have been, though.
But I think that that's a great idea, and it's been seconded and not selected.
Is that a call for question?
You've heard a motion. And second, all in favor of said motion, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed. Motion carries. At this time, we should have Commissioner comment. Start from Commissioner Hudson.
Well, good evening. I just want to say my feelings about voting for, voting not to raise taxes. I'm like Lynn there. I've said it before. I know that education is our priority, and I am concerned that we are not able and have not been able to give the schools systems what, everything they asked for and all the other agencies. I'm concerned about that. But I'm also concerned that the legislators, as your motion to let the legislators know what they are doing to us here in the counties. I don't want to give our legislature a pass. I want to, as one speaker said, speak loudly. I think as we as commissioners need to speak to them whenever we see them and tell them what they are doing, you know, that they have to wave and the banner, I say, for the counties, all of the cuts that are coming down from the state, as well as from the federal government. But so I don't want the public to think that I am not concerned about that. I am very concerned about that, so thank you.
Have no additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say that our county manager earns a very good salary, a high salary, and he's very good with the budget. And he has a wonderful assistant in Dwayne Holder. And the first budget that they presented to us, cut nothing, provided for increases. No department heads were rioting about it, and it didn't call for anybody to be laid off. Frankly, I didn't see any reason for a tax increase. Now, as far as the shortfall made by actions of the state legislator, when you look at that under a microscope, some of those things really did need cutting. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Nothing, Father.
Thank you. It has been, as noted, I'm certainly concerned about the tax increase. That we have undertaken flooding and undertaken the hurricane, and it's just been difficult on a lot of people in this area. And I hate to see the budget balanced on the back of the citizens. So that was my reason for not voting for a tax increase, and I stand with that. We did, as noted, increase the public education. We increased funding for our security, our safety, our jails. But we didn't give all that they wanted. But certainly, we were concerned about increasing and doing what we thought was right. So with that said, I feel comfortable in my decision. Thank you very much. Commissioner Wood.
I'm not going to explain my vote, except to say that I'm an elected county official. Very clearly stated, as Commissioner Webb said, this is our job. And I think we did the job that had to be done. And everyone needs to understand that these priorities, education, public safety, economic development, human resources, and right on down to recreational activities, they did not get everything they requested. No one did. It is still a bare bones, meeting the minimum expectations so that we can get along one more year. So things are going to have to change this time next year. Thank you all for your support, and I really appreciate those of you who came forward tonight. Thank you.
Sometime we have to do the difficult things. And I was willing to make that stand. And I thank those people who came by the office and supported and asked for the reasoning. And I appreciate your support for that. I want to say to you, the citizen of Pitt County, last night, a tornado struck my district without warning. There were no lives lost. And for that, we all are blessed. And for that, God was merciful. But somebody in this county was working on our behalf. I had just come ahead of the tornado from Williamston. And by the time I walked in the house, my phone rang. Surprisingly, but I was pleased to know that someone on the other end was sharing with me what had happened. We must be prepared for what Mother Nature renders us. And we must do the hard things. And I support what has been offered as it relates to the fact that we are not doing everything that everyone wants. And we cannot afford everything. But the citizen in this county needs to know that there is one thing on the North Carolina legislative mind that concerns me greatly. And that is what they are planning to do with the Department of Social Services. I appreciate the communications that I received from our director, Jan Elliott. And I invite all of you on the board to read it. Some years ago, we had a very viable mental health system. Everyone knew where we could get mental health from. And it worked. Someone in their wisdom found it necessary to break it down. And now we have a bigger problem with mental health that we pay greatly in the jails with. So I ask you to talk to legislators, get yourself educated about this Department of Social Service regional idea, and join in the battle with the social services. No one can address the issues of Pitt County resident's social problems but those of us who live in Pitt County. Can you think of thirty Department of Social Services for the one hundred counties? Who's going to bear those burdens? There are a lot of questions, and we need to start looking at them, examine them, and talking with the legislators as to why they find it necessary. Thank you so much for your patience and your listening to me, but it is serious. Be merciful, dear Lord. Thank you.
No comment.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to reiterate what was said earlier. We cut six million dollars of requests that were not frivolous requests. I think the manager's original budget was good. But and another thing on this that we did tonight just prevents us from reducing the fund balance drastically. And I know that the fund balance is not the holy grail. However, it is a big part of our financial outlook. And we worked very hard, ever since I've been on the board. I think it was around eleven percent when I came on. And we have worked extremely hard, with one fortunate windfall, to get that to where it is. And it is very tough to keep groups of elected officials from dipping into pools of money. But that money is used to run the day-to-day operations of the county. And we start dipping into that. You want to talk about trouble, let a hurricane hit or a lot of tornadoes. And we've dwindled that down just so that we can say, I'm not going to pay sixty cent more a month. I don't think that's very responsible. And I think that we made the most responsible decision we could. Commissioner Williams, you'll be very happy. I just got a text message not three minutes ago that the mandate for regionalization has been taken out of the Social Services bill. But that is a testament to the effectiveness counties can have in the legislature when we speak as one voice. Because the one hundred counties together are the only group that represent every North Carolinian. It's the only group. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me the time to speak. And I thank the board for its service and time tonight, and the citizens for coming out.
I must apologize for my outburst, but thank you.
Has been moved properly seconded. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. Good night, adjournments.